And, alright, I think it's five o'clock, so we'll start the meeting. Everybody set up their chairs, great. Welcome, students. Welcome to the meeting. Alright, um, agenda review and disposition, do you have any changes?
I do have a couple of changes. Under discussion, item number one, I'd like to strike that, just because I'm waiting for a quote for that piece, so I won't be ready for that until December. And then, under other, I'd like to add an update to the principal search process. And then, under non-public, I'd like to add negotiations.
Okay. Great, okay, and those of board members, are you seeing this pamphlet? We've been talking about for quite a while now, creating. Do we have enough copies? Will Kyla do more copies?
There's copies on the, on the front.
Janice, will you pass that down?
On the chair.
Oh, and on the chair, too. Um, so, real quick, we're, we're just working on this brochure. Um, you'll see that in the beginning, we've got just the board members. Procedures, chain of command kind of thing on that middle column. School board, duties and responsibilities, guidelines for public comment. Just to remind everybody, we, we approved on a first reading, the public comment that's been protocolled for about twenty years now, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty comfortable pro-public comment. You know, their ability to comment and speak, and we can adjust times. Um, gives us wiggle room, too. And then, our goals are at the last pamphlet, a last panel of the pamphlet. And this was just to help people when they come, they're not particularly aware of how the meetings run and how they go, so we thought that this would be a good handout to share with the public, so it would give them some guidelines on how things go. We've been working on it for a while now, throughout the summer, and we've been trying to figure out, you know, what to put on it, what not to put on it. The public comments, real short and brief. State your name, what town you're from, and have your time to speak, and depending upon, we have wiggle room, if it's a full house, then we have to look at time, if it's not a full house, people have more time. Anybody have any thoughts, or want to share anything on that? Have any ideas, we could let Kyla know to after, once she goes check it out. Please, good, got the copy, okay, awesome, alright, great. So, privilege of the floor, does anybody have anything to say? I guess they're all coming for a class. Welcome again, thank you for coming. Approval of the minutes for October 3rd. Who would like to, yes, Peter?
I approve him, I make a motion to approve him.
Make a motion to approve, seconded by?
Greg.
Okay, Greg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Great, abstaining, okay. Great, sounds good. Student report?
Okay, so, almost done with sports. All sports came to an end, but football is still in the playoff season. Their record going into playoffs is eight to one, and they won their first playoff game, which is exciting, uh, last week on Saturday. It was twenty-eight to eight, and for this Saturday, they'll take on the Sabres of Sahigan at one o'clock. And also, for this month, on November 20th, after school, we're gonna have a dodgeball tournament in our gym to raise money for the Felix Strong Scholarship and the Jameson Jackio Memorial Scholarship. And also, for this month, on Tuesday, November 21st, we're gonna have a blood, uh, drive hosted by the American Red Cross. And, just so you know, donors must be sixteen years old and have a signed permission slip from the parent or guardian. Moving on to clubs, Quiz Bowl, they had a bunch of tournaments last month, on, in the month of October. Khalil Docklia scored the majority of the points, but Norman Sackett and Paul Mason also contributed significantly. They also placed third at the New Hampshire State Tournament in Lisbon and won the Ghost Tournament at Hanover, or Hanover. Student Senate, um, we're not really talking about the bills for our student government field trip or event in April, so now we're focusing more on what, how we want to improve on school and stuff with that. And, we thought of bringing back vending machines. Some pros about vending machines are, like, for snacks and drinks for the students, but there are a lot of cons. There's board of health issues, where the profits are gonna go, and also, anything that deals with food is really the cafe services problem, et cetera.
Not their profit, it, it falls into the lap, yeah. We had a great time.
Um, for the National Honor Society, and on last Halloween, we, they hosted a trunk retreat, and a couple of kids volunteered to give out candy to the kids. Chamber Singers, on October 25th, we went to PSU for the New England Choral Festival. A bunch of high schools around New England came to the college to form all together with a set of songs. We also had a featured choral director, Maura, Maura Smiley. She's truly incredible, and it was a fun experience for me, because I'm a Chamber Singers. And lastly, for academics, on October 18th, it was a PSAT testing day, and quarter one grades closed on November 2nd. Thank you.
There you go.
Great job. Okay, principals' report.
Thank you, well, Jasmine did a great job for us. Uh, just a couple of items. She told you about the grades closed, uh, so once I get the grades, the verification done, we'll, we are mailing, uh, the first quarter home, uh, to make sure we have all the correct addresses and that, so parents will be expecting a letter, I mean, their grades for quarter one, on semester one, quarter one. Uh, parent open house is the fourteenth, so they'll get that hot copy, and that's at 5:30 to 7:00. It's all on this floor, uh, and hopefully, we get a good turnout for that. On the 16th, Thursday, you know, the high school is hosting a Real Turkey, Real Turkey, guys, a bit of a, uh, for the entire school with all the trimmings, so that's on the 16th for lunches A, B, and C. The play is also going on the 17th and 18th. If you would like a ticket to that play, Jen will get them to you, probably before the end of the meeting tonight. But, that will be our first play under the theater direction of Audrey Ringline, so we're looking forward to seeing that. And, we had a great turnout for the penny sale last Saturday following the football game. It was quite a huge crowd, they took in a lot of money, and congrats to the charities who do that. They spend a lot of money on our kids for scholarships, uh, come the spring, so. That's it, unless any of the board member have questions for me? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Committee reports, teaching and learning.
I may.
Yes, Bill, you're on.
There were two major items that were up for discussion. The first was an update on the ADAP WILD program. Sean acclaimed the role that ADAP plays in student discipline management, and he's looking for authorization to renew and update the memorandum of understanding. And that, I believe, we're gonna be taking up tonight?
Yes.
No.
Oh, no?
No.
From the ADAP?
No.
We're not, okay, we're not taking that up tonight. Uh, the second issue was a sample policy that had been, I believe, provided by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, with, dealing with restraint and seclusion. This policy, uh, really reflects changes in legislation, and it will, it was moved forward for a second reading, and that was all that we had, uh, on our agenda for that evening.
Great, thanks, Phil. Peter?
I took copious notes at our last committee meeting, unfortunately, they were under my four snow tires in the back of my car, so I'm gonna talk from memory. I do know we went over the athletic-
I have some stuff, too, in case I need to-
Okay, the athletic fields, and we're also gonna address that under discussion items. I do believe we had a budget review, too, did we?
No budget review, but we did talk about the design cost for the athletic proposal, which included a couple of different options, including lights on both the soccer lacrosse field and the football field, and we also talked about the option turf on the lacrosse and soccer field, which would add field hockey, so it was unanimous to the board, um, to vote on tonight, to, if we're gonna move forward with the design cost for the proposal.
Yeah, there's several steps, the first one is the engineering-
So, that's what we're talking about tonight, yep.
And quite frankly, I don't remember the rest of the stuff that we had then, until Kyla, if you would-
No, that's, that's, that was about it.
Great, okay, thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Okay, discussion items, we're gonna scratch the first one, wait for that quote to come in. Athletic fields design, cost approval.
So, the other piece we did tonight is, the board members thought it might be helpful, well, if Mr. Austin put together just a one-pager of the benefits and why the proposal is coming to you for the complex, and it's really to expand opportunities, not just for varsity sports, but for developmental sports, JV, freshman, the whole deal. Remember, um, part of the field hockey piece, if you have turf, then you must play, uh, field hockey on turf, so that's why field hockey would be moved to the lacrosse soccer, and it would be field, field hockey. So, I'm gonna have Todd just kind of review the summary of the why behind it. We started talking about this in the spring, or, or the summer, as far as when you had asked, we talked about lights last year after our Luc Besson game, and, uh, the board had asked Todd to come up with, and us to come up with the scope of where we foresee the future of the athletic fields. So, um, this is the summary as to the why, and, and, and kind of the next steps with it, so, if you wanna take over, Todd.
Sure. Um, so, on the one page, I don't know if I made enough for everybody over there, apologize for that, but, so, lights on fields, basically any size now, you're gonna look at four light posts on a field. Looking at about six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. Some of the benefits of that, um, so, JV games, sometimes later in the season, they get cut a little short based on darkness. We've lost a few games at the JV and freshman level, um, because other school districts, they had busing problems, um, they couldn't leave till after their students got brought home, you know, the school to home route, um, which meant they couldn't get here till, like, five o'clock. Sometimes, at that level, we'll do, kind of, we'll bring in a couple teams, and the games go a little longer, so we'd have that option to play a little more. On the football side of things, um, we can host Plymouth Huskies, their playoffs. When they make the playoffs, they have to be played at night. They actually had a game that kicked off on a Wednesday night at 8:00 PM down in Derry, so they had to travel all the way down there. I was there, it ended at ten o'clock, and we got home at about 11:30. If you play on Friday nights, um, athletes get an extra day of rest. Right now, our football team is practicing under the floodlights out there, so, um, after daylight savings gets moved, it gets dark at four o'clock, so it would help with practices. More specific to soccer, our girls soccer team, um, throughout the season, didn't have enough players to play varsity and JV at the same time, so we went back-to-back to get the games in. Those games, but the majority of them, maybe all of them that we played here, got cut short because of darkness. There's a couple, um, it was quite dark out there. It also allows us to play, um, multiple games on the same day, so when the schedule comes out, sometimes we'll have varsity games get scheduled on the same day, now we gotta move around. Practices can go longer, obviously, in the dark, um, when we can turn the lights on. Turf on the soccer lacrosse field, um, there's many benefits to turf, but just some quick ones. Rainouts will be almost nonexistent. Last year, we had to move some spring games to Holdenis, um, school, so we could play on their turf. Uh, field hockey, could play on turf, the NCAA level, um, field hockey's required to be played on turf, so just help our kids, um, prepare for that. Uh, lacrosse teams prefer turf over grass. In the springtime, we can move the snow, um, our spring teams can get out of the gym a little earlier, get on a field. We can rotate practices, um, later in the evening, and play longer. There is a replacement of turf, it's every, about seven to ten years, based on the compact, compaction level. Seven to tens of range, depending on how much use it gets. The replacement cost is about six hundred to eight hundred thousand at this current price. You know, seven to ten years down the road, that number could be different, as we know. So, as Kyla spoke about, um, next step in the process would, uh, be to have an engineer come in. They would do a site-specific design based on drainage, and, um, you know, the lights, how they're gonna secure them in the ground, if it's rocky in the ground, you know, it's, there's a different system, that's why there's a range of costs. That design would be used for the bidding process if we move forward. Companies that, um, put in lights and turf would, um, use that plan as their design that they're bidding on, for that. So, that cost, if approved or whatever, would be from this year's operating budget, to get that design, and we'll go from there.
So, the committee voted to move forward unanimously to approve the design cost, and part of that discussion was, do you, do, do we get the design cost for the entire proposal? And I think that's what we were recommending, if you, to just have it, if we move forward with that. So, that's what we're asking for tonight. So, I don't know if there's any questions for Todd, or Sam?
I have a question, just on procedure, just so everyone's clear. A vote yes tonight to do the design, to get an engineer to take care of it, is just a vote to do that? It's not a vote for any piece or the whole project here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you will be getting the design, and then you can look at options of how you wanna move forward. You can look at lights, you can look at turf and lights, you can look at one field, you can look at another field, you could look at all of it, I think, depending on-
Or none?
Or none.
Or not?
Yeah.
And then, and then you'd have to have a discussion about funding?
Correct.
About how, how that, that piece will work. I just wanna make clear that that's where we are in the process.
Yes, Phil?
At, at the last meeting, um, I think, the, my interpretation of the explanation was, initially, there was gonna be a request for ten thousand dollars to do a site plan, and then the next step would be a sixty to ninety thousand dollar engineer plan. Which one are we talking about here?
We're looking at up to ninety thousand to do both.
Could I then make a comment?
Sure.
Yes.
After the last meeting, and after we voted for the ninety-nine thousand dollar roof on the outdoor batting cage, I've started talking to people in the community. I would guess I've spoken to about fifteen to twenty people about both projects. And the roof on the batting cage is a done deal, um, so I kinda, I just asked people, what do you think about spending up to three million dollars on the fields? Not one per, the closest I came to anyone speaking in favor of it was only if there was a track on the outside of the turf football field. That was the only thing. I spoke with people, realtors, bankers, retail workers, just residents, blue collar people, and all, at times, emotionally concerned that we were even moving, thinking about moving forward with this. So, I just, oftentimes, we don't hear from the community, um, and I just said, well, please know that it may be coming, um, but it was resounding that the number of no votes and the anti-nan comments that I heard, so.
Yes, right.
So, I guess it, it really comes down to how it was, how the question was asked.
Yeah.
You know, so, I, I can easily say, you know, how do you feel about spending three million dollars on X, Y, and Z?
Yeah.
And just the way I ask it, it's gonna, I can elicit whatever response I want. But, um, my, my question is about funding. You know, a lot of schools, at least a lot of private schools, I know the, the turf fields and different projects don't come out of the operating budget, they do a lot of fundraising. So, as a public entity, public school, are we allowed to fundraise for something like this? Is this something that we could, you know, put on the long-term plan, like, start actually fundraising? Then a lot of people from Plymouth did them well, and I think would, would be interested in donating, you know? That's just a thought, that's just a thought, because I get it, the taxpayers in Plymouth, you know, we're, we're all very concerned about that, about, you know, raising taxes, and even in the surrounding communities, I completely get it. So, I think it would, it probably would, I guess, sit a little better with them if they knew that we were doing some sort of fundraising to try and achieve that, try to offset it.
Yeah, so we're, we're a little far away from that piece, but absolutely, you can. Years ago, when the track was brought up to come up with that piece, the board said, go ahead and fundraise and see what you get. They only, I think, raised about twenty-two thousand dollars, so that was not enough-
Yeah.
To do anything, so just give it back. I think, once you get the design, and see what the actual cost is gonna be for whatever you want, as far as the scope of the project, um, it's, it's a two-part question, right? It's, it's philosophical in this town, as you know, I'll just address the elephant in the room, as far as that piece, I think you have to look at both fields and, and kind of see what the priorities are. We'd love all of it, but absolutely, it's a huge project, but, but moving forward, just with the design cost, you could actually see what the cost is, instead of just wondering, I mean, we're asked all the time about, why don't, why don't we have lights, why don't we have turf? I mean, I get that, that question all the time. So, I think it, it, just to go through the process would be helpful, but you, the answer to your question is, yes, you can fundraise.
But I guess, how, how effective is it?
I think it depends on what it's for, you know?
Yeah, 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 that's true.
And, and the grassroots behind it. Typically, a lot of things get passed when there is a group of community members, obviously, that help out with that. You have our, most, some of our most successful programs at the little kid level is the parents that are involved. And if you have a strong group of parents involved, whatever the sport may be, those programs are successful because of them, so.
Just to piggyback off of Kyla, uh, if I recall, because I think I'm the only one that's been here that long, they did, they did do the design for the track. That committee did, they approved, and they came forward, but the money never fell through. But, on the other end, when we redesigned, when we did the ski jumping, that was almost totally done.
Is that right?
And, and the, the town came out and, and forced, and just, you know?
Fundraised the whole thing.
Fundraised, and it was well into a hundred thousand dollars, if I recall, and still gave me a ton of money for equipment and electric and all that, so. Depends, like she said, on-
Yeah.
Okay, so Paul, and then Barbara. You're good, okay, he, okay.
That's what I was gonna say.
Alright, sure, great, thanks, Barb.
So, I just wanted to further on that comment about the ski jump. We, we as a board had pretty much thought that it was going to be in our past, and that was probably as late as August.
Yes.
And the community really came behind and got that up. It was amazing, so there was a lot of community support for that, when we thought it was a done deal and in our past.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We did.
It was great.
Only state and the nation.
Okay, so, the question is, um, moving forward, do people want to, we have the money to do the project?
The design cost.
The design for the project.
One more clarification.
Yes.
How, how long are the plans due for? Do we have a lifespan of, well, you have ten years, you, you have to build it with this plan, or are they gonna say, five years, we need to come out and do it again?
Do they?
So, the plan itself would be, you know, a few years. The money that it would cost over the years may change. You're right?
Right, right.
You know, so the plan itself would be the plan.
So, so the plan would be good?
Would be viable for, for years, yeah.
For years, few years?
Yeah.
Just the cost that changes.
Okay, Peter?
It's a lot of money, it's coming out of our budget this year, but we'll have definitive costs. We won't be speculating, it's gonna be somewhere between two point one and two point six. It's gonna be two point two five, or whatever it is, and we can act more intelligently if we have concrete numbers than we, we're gonna vote on speculation.
Thank you. Alright.
And it's a multi-year, um, project. It's not something that's gonna be, if you vote on it, it's, we can't get that done this summer. So, it's something long-range, but, but we thought we have to have a conversation moving forward.
Okay. Barb?
You're referring to if we move forward with the full project?
Right.
That's what's gonna take a lot of time.
Right, we're not asking for anything in this budget.
But this part, the ninety thousand will be-
The ninety, we're asking for right now.
Right now.
I have one more question.
Yes, great.
Todd, I'm just curious, and, and I don't know about this, but have there been any studies looking at recruitment? You know, getting this kind of infrastructure at the school, the fields, the, the lights, would it improve our recruitment of kids? Would kids, more kids want to tuition in? You know, would, would it create more of a, uh, this is more of a destination for some parts, more than it already does?
Well, we're not allowed to recruit kids.
Well, would more kids wanna come?
More kids that are looking for schools to go to may be attracted to our area.
Yeah.
You know, the youth, the youth kids that are starting into sports, you know, seeing a turf field, it's, it's bright, it's shiny, it's new, you know, it looks cool. Recruiting those kids that are already in our area, I think, would be, would, we benefit from that.
Yeah.
More.
Have, have you ever talked to other football programs that have a lot of night games? A lot of, you know, night activities? Do they see more in terms of booster fund raises?
So, I, I've talked to, um, Hollis Brookline just installed a, a new turf field. Their, their revenue at the gate is, is up across the board. Goffstown has just put in a new field, I haven't talked to him about, um, this, this fall is the first season that he's had a full season on the turf. But generally, um, the night games draw a little bigger crowd, um, as far as that is. You know, um, people are out of work, they can get here, you know, um, things like that.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, Paul?
Have you talked to anybody that's had the field five or six years?
Um, so, the one person I've talked to that's had a longstanding field, actually, there's two. One is Sahigan. They've had their field, I wanna say it's been about twelve years now. You know, they, they have the one field, it's the football field. The scheduling is tougher when it's just one field that, um, is the football field, just because when it's on a football field, the football team takes precedence over the other, the other teams. Oh, it stood up, they've replaced theirs one time. And Hanover's the other one, um, they just replaced their turf two years ago, and they had it for nine, nine years.
Have you talked to Jason Bergeron about Hanover?
Yeah, yeah, he, I got most of the information from him about the Hanover field. So, they replace, I wanna say it was two years ago they replaced it. They test it every year, they come in and do a compact test on the turf, and once it hits a certain point, you're gonna replace it.
How does snow removal affect it?
Snow removal, um, you gotta do it right. You know, you could, um, if you're moving snow with, say, like, a heavy snow plow or something, you could get down too low and dig into the turf. Typically, they put a, it's plasticky, hard rubber, um, below the, the blade, so you don't hurt the turf, dig into it. But, you know, uh, Jason Bergeron, again, they, they used a snow blower at Hanover. It's lighter, doesn't compact the ground as much.
Barb?
So, this probably will be a question for later, but having brought up equipment and plowing, is that going to mean that we would require different equipment than what we now have?
So, when you build a turf field, the, the equipment needed for the infill, so there's a rubber infill, there's a sand-based infill that goes on the field, that machine comes with, within the cost. As far as removing snow, our grounds crew has what we need right now to move snow, we need it.
Phil?
With respect to lights, what would it cost to run the lights, the four or five times a year that we would probably be using it for games?
I think it would be easier more than that.
Well, yeah, it would be practices, I think they're saying, and games.
The new lights are LED, Phil, I don't, I don't have a exact cost per game, per hour, whatever, but, um, the new lights, it is, it's very much less than the old lights. So, you know, you go to some old fields, they have the old halogen lights, they cost more to run. The new LED lights don't cost as much, I don't have an exact number, though.
Do you know if anyone?
Yes, sure.
Do you know if anyone's somehow trying to use- Do you know if anyone's somehow trying to use solar to provide that?
I don't know, I know Holdenis has a big solar field, I don't know if they're running their lights and stuff off that or not, but.
I don't know.
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. Do people need more time? Does anyone want to make a motion? Where are people at, Paul?
Yeah, I think a motion would forward with the design piece, or the...
Okay. A motion to move forward with the specific design project. Seconded by?
Can I?
Yes.
Do we wanna set a figure on that? Isn't it to spend up to?
I would ask that you, you're specific to say up to ninety thousand, so you can be specific.
To authorize the expense of up to ninety thousand dollars for a site plan slash engineering analysis of this proposal.
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
It's your motion, I just.
Congratulations. Perfectly said.
Okay, great. Seconded by Greg. All those in favor? Opposing? Abstaining? Okay, thank you. Budget review, first draft?
Okay, don't take off my handouts. I need someone.
Janet, can you pass the budgets out, please?
Yeah. All right, does everybody have the handouts? Yes?
Yes.
So just as far as process, oh, wait a minute. Just as far as process, typically, in November, I give you the first draft, I will not go through the entire document, but I do wanna highlight for you some of the significant increases and decreases, to give you a chance to kind of look at it over the month, come back next month with any suggestions. So, in this budget is what is needed, given all the replacements that we need as well, which is sometimes the percentage is a little bit higher, which it is, and then we can do our work from there through work at the board level. So I gave you a pink handout, which I'm just gonna go through a quick explanation of the big categories as far as what's significant and what's not. The first category on the pink sheet is the special education. So you will see in that whole category, and that includes everything from, that, everything in the special ed piece, including autism services, independent evaluations, equipment maintenance, and out-of-district students, you'll see is up significantly at four hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred forty-six. So that is a bulk of the increase right there. And that is usually based on, remember, special ed sometimes is a catch-all for homeless student charges, could be for charter school charges, it's for special education, it's for foster care, it's for anything court-appointed, and students that are placed out of district, the school has an associated cost with that. So that's all lumped under the out-of-district placement, you'll see that number, which is really so high sometimes. Law has changed over the past few years, where we have gained more responsibility for any students that's put in foster care, or placed out of district, or even going to a charter school, we're responsible, they're moving, they're coming from one of the Pemmy Baker towns, we're responsible for the cost of special education, if that makes sense. The next one is fourteen hundred, co-curricular athletics. Overall, that's up fourteen thousand, five fifty-nine. And I just always like to tell you where the cycles are for uniforms, so this year, they'll be replacing cheerleading, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls track, helmet reconditioning for football, golf bags, and then netting for volleyball. And that, that's just a general idea, and that's within a cycle that's already, that Todd follows. The twenty-one-twenty account, which is guidance, there is, it is up twenty thousand, nine oh five, that is purely on the collective bargaining agreement or any track changes within that. So that's just your current staffing increases. The twenty-one-sixty account, which is speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy, so again, related to any special ed services, there is an increase in those related services and therapies, so that's why you're seeing that up. The twenty-three-twenty account is SAU services, so that's up twenty thousand, one ninety-five, that's your Pemmy Baker apportionment, we have the same staffing, really, the increase from the SAU office is the health insurance, which is a different story, which is going, you're going to see an increase that is quite significant, SAU-wide. The twenty-six-hundred account is custodial services, it's up a hundred ninety-six thousand, six eighty-one. So what Mr. Parsons and I did was put your current capital projects in there as well, that's some, sometimes this could be in line that you could be flexible with, as far as what, what is priority and not, but we put it all in in the initial round, and then we can look at it second round, too. Obviously, there's been a significant increase in costs with contracted services, maintenance and supplies. So this custodial services not only covers what's happening here in the building, but the buildings and grounds, the park and rec department, as far as their costs as well. So that's all included in this piece. We do anticipate an increase in water and sewage of about eight thousand, seven seventy-six. Part of your capital improvement plan is the burn room drain that needs to be replaced, that's come up, so that's about thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Your, part of your technology improvement plan is the server room upgrade, which is ninety-seven twenty. Another project that is, that's in your plan are Wi-Fi and cameras to all of the athletic fields, and that is really for streaming and huddle, I don't know if any of you are, so, some of our teams use, kind of, the best way to describe huddle is a playback, or film, video to replay.
It's a way to review film for, for teams, they can, they can edit and cut and put notes on film.
What, what, what else do you need Wi-Fi for? Just the?
Wi-Fi for streaming, the cameras, things like that.
Okay. Replacing the scissor lift, that's from the maintenance equipment, and then replacing the tractor for parks and rec out here, as far as the grounds.
Yes.
So that's.
The John Deere.
Yeah. The twenty-seven-hundred account, which is, which is transportation services, you're in the last year of your busing contract, but really, the increase, again, is coming through specialized transportation. So that's any special ed students that have to be transported to other places. So that's where the increase is coming from. And then again, that includes homeless transportation, so any student who is homeless within the SAU, or coming back, coming into the SAU, that cost is split with the sending district, so that's how the homeless laws come about. Health insurance, health insurance is up significantly this year. I gave you a twenty-year history of medical rates, we are in a pool, you'll see, with members of the local group, so that's all of our SAU forty-eight schools, the town of Plymouth, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, the town of Brumney, town of Thornton, and town of Waterville Valley. And you'll see the health trust average at the top for this coming up year is sixteen point five percent, our local group is at thirteen point nine percent, so that's what I'm talking about, as far as a significant increase in health insurance. On the next page are your decreases. So you'll see regular education, which is your eleven hundred account, that's a majority of your budget, so that is, that, that decrease is showing your savings from your folks that are retiring. So it's the same amount of staff, and then putting in lower salaries for, for those folks that are, that are leaving. For the applied technology program, that's supposed to say applied, we do have a retirement there, too, so that's the savings with that piece, but same amount of staffing. We have the principal's office savings, we have a new principal coming in, so.
Thank you very much.
That's two days' savings. And then the principal and interest, that's just your payment for next year, it's down fourteen thousand. Your two debts right now is the cost of your energy performance plan from a few years ago, as well as the career tech center, which is here at the renovation here. Overall budget, draft one is up eight hundred eighty-thousand, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, three forty-six, which is five percent, just on appropriations, not accounting for revenues. So, we can go back and, with the direction of the board, kind of take a look at it over the next month, and then we can certainly do any work for you on our end, if you wanna get it down to a certain percentage as well.
Great, any questions for Kyle?
Did we have a goal of three percent increase?
It is three percent, yeah, but I think as part of that discussion from retreat, that we looked at, you know, that is the goal, but let's put what's in there and then see if we can make. That's definitely the goal for you, yeah.
And we can certainly recommend that Kyle goes through the drawing board and see with Bruce and Janet how, where we can, where we can tailor it back, see what you can do, and second reading next month.
Yeah, we could break, definitely, kind of, if you, you know, how, however much you wanna go, and then what cuts into programs, like, as we get lower and lower, so it's just something, we could bring a few options for you.
Yep, yeah, great.
Great, Phil?
I'd rather see the administration come in with a list, rather than us try to cut the budget.
Yeah.
To get more in line with the three, I, I think it's micromanaging if we try to tell you whether, and I don't think that's appropriate, but if you could try to get closer to that, three percent, that's one person.
Sure.
We can, yeah.
But just to be clear, we don't have, because we, you know, we almost faced this, we have no control.
Special education.
School administration over the special education, which is, my rough calculation's well over fifty percent of these increases, correct? And that includes the transportation, and the health insurance is just a bad year, and we don't have control over the health insurance either.
At six hundred thousand total.
So, so three-quarters of what's on here, we don't have control over, and by we, I mean the board and the administration. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Anybody else? Okay, so a couple of options.
So we'll come up with some options that get you down to certain levels, and then you can absolutely choose what you wanna keep, what you wanna move forward with, okay?
Thank you. Okay, November committee meetings?
So, the November committee meetings, last year when we had committee, we, I don't think we were able to have a quorum because it was a week of Thanksgiving, so, it's, again, the week of Thanksgiving, so I remember the board had asked that we maybe cancel that meeting and just have our whole board meeting for December four, fifth, wait, what's the Tuesday?
Twenty-first?
No. December ten, fifth, yes.
People have expressed that's what they'd like to do, and we're comfortable to be able to return to school for a week and then have our meeting, unless?
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the meetings, I mean, it's gonna, it's budget season, so that's what we're doing. Try not to add too many other things to the table with that going on, because it does take some work.
Okay, sounds good, so we'll cancel that week, give you more time to work on the budget.
Yep, in the meantime, we do post the drafts online, and then we'll just update them as we work through them.
Okay, sounds great. Update on principal's report?
So I would like to ask the board to extend the posting for an additional month. I think the posting was a little bit early to gather enough candidates within the pool, so I would like to extend it to December first. That's a recommendation from your committee. Those of you that sit on the committee, feel free to speak up, but I think that's the majority of the reason.
Okay, any questions, or, no, okay.
It is a change than what we have posted, so I just wanna update that, and I would like the board to vote on that.
Okay. Who wants to do that?
Do you wanna motion?
Yeah.
I would move that we authorize the extension of the principal search committee for one month, is that what you?
Well, till December, December first.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just gonna get it out for additional several weeks.
Thank you, seconded by Peter. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay.
Thank you.
Other business?
Uh, no other business.
Okay. Privilege of the floor. So going back to our policy, if anyone would like to speak, we just need your name and what community you're from, and, or what town, and anything you'd like to share with us.
Hi, Sarah Terrell, Plymouth. I agree with Phil in that my interest in any sort of athletic field dates would include a track, that's something that's been talked about so many times. And so I would love for the board to at least sort of feel out the community, are we willing to do some more fundraising, maybe we have more parents that are willing to get on board with that. I don't think it's planned in this current design, which is fine, but I, I just don't want us to forget about it, because it is definitely something that the community has asked for on several occasions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I run to?
Yes.
Could we add that? Would that, would that be much of a cost? Because if that, if that, you know, I agree, if that increases the community's interest in going forward with the project like this, you know, why, why not? Why, why not add that, at least to the engineering plan?
Yeah, so there, there was a group, right?
Yes, I had the design.
Bruce would know more about the, how it went, I wasn't involved in.
Didn't you say something about, it wasn't, we couldn't have enough lanes?
Yeah, we couldn't have an eight-lane track out here, six.
So I was, I was just out at Sauhegan, and I counted their lanes, and there were six.
Yeah, we just wouldn't be able to host a, and I, he knows more.
A state.
We wouldn't be able to host a state meet, but you'd have a, a workable track out there, six lanes would be ideal, with, with the, you know, all the construction we have out there, the tower and all that piece, that's what the design was made, I have the actual drawings in that piece, yeah.
Could we still have meets? Could we still do meets, just not a state championship percent?
It was beautiful design.
Yeah, yeah, we could add that, that'd be, that'd be great.
I don't know how much.
It's already done, though, is what you're saying.
The, well, that was years ago.
No, no, I was, I was on the board, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, we considered it at the time, and.
And they came and did a, they did a proposal for it.
We would have to dynamite back into the hill.
Yep.
Which was a consideration.
And there's one corner, right?
Correct, and so, at least as I recall, the thought process after was, maybe off-campus sites needed to be.
Yeah, you're talking about playgrounds, yes.
Is, is what it was. Also, we've expressed some interest in, in partnering with the college on, on something like that, because the college doesn't have an outdoor track, too. But that, that's where that stood.
Is that it, as far as the, how the conversation ended? Just, before mine?
The track wouldn't fit.
Wouldn't fit over there.
Wouldn't fit on the soccer lacrosse field, it wouldn't fit up on the parking lot.
Yeah.
And if you had it, you would have to, you would have to dynamite into the hill, and there was unknown cost of what that would take, and plus, there'd be all the considerations of doing that, and you could only fit in six lanes, which couldn't allow you to have state meets, which was the consideration. So my recollection was that we passed on it, and for another day, but would have to consider off-site locations, like up off Tenny Mountain someplace, or down at the college someplace, or for future discussions with the college, that's my recollection, but this was years ago.
And they only raised twenty-two thousand, out of the friends of the track.
Correct.
So I ended up after giving that money back to, you know, the people who go in.
Okay.
I said something real quick, yeah, sorry.
Yes, so continuing on.
Yeah, so my name's David James, I live right here in Plymouth, I'm also the president of the Plymouth Huskies, and so I obviously missed my opportunity to talk to everybody about voting on the, the design, and so thank you for doing that, we really appreciate it, so. I, so, I think Friday night football has been an event for the past two years, and I, I would give different feedback than the gentleman, I think everybody that I've spoken to, the feedback has been awesome about having a Friday night football game here in Plymouth. And I think it's, it's a little bit overdue in that regard, just being a towns person, I have young children that are growing up, it is an event, it's, it's the busiest football game that I've been to in a long time, every Friday night, so. I don't think anybody would have any problem spending that kind of money to invest in the athletic fields here. And the other thing, too, is that I also coach lacrosse, there's over a hundred and twenty boys and girls that play lacrosse here in Plymouth, and we have to go to the college, we have to pay. And we have to go to the college. We have to pay money to play at the college. We have to go pay money to play at Holdenis because they have a turf field. So I think that would also help our lacrosse kids as well, having a turf field, you know, having accessibility here. So I think the lights do a lot for the community. I'm not looking at it as dollars in the sense I am looking at it building a community. And I think more people, you know, folks in my age group will be able to come for a Friday Night Football game. So having that and also having our kids being able to practice here as well. So our football kids have to go down to D and M because we have, we have, we have to finish our football season. We just wrapped it up. We have to go down to D and M and turn on the lights down there. They're gracious enough to let us use it, but I think we're really jumping through a lot of hoops for things that we can afford to do here as a community. So that's just my two cents. But I would have said that before, but here we are. So I appreciate everybody voting to go to the next step. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's why we created Privilege of the Floor, the second part, so it's good.
I also just wanted to speak as a community member in support of investing in our athletic fields. In particular, having won the soccer for the last 10 years, it's very sad to see our JV boys and girls have to go second on the field and then play partial games or no game. To have visiting teams come and then the JV teams not even be able to play because it gets dark too soon. And you think about developing a soccer program, that includes your JV team getting a lot of playtime, a lot of time on the field, a lot of time in games, so that when you move up to varsity, those players are ready. And then in addition, we've seen some luck, especially the boys soccer team in recent years. They went to the quarterfinals this year and then got eliminated on a turf field, right, by a team that I'm sure practices every night and has plenty of time on their field. And as JV kids didn't miss home games during the darkness. So I think lights are a big deal. Supportive of football as well. Football often gets a lot of the attention, but I do want to make sure we're thinking about a long-term developmental progress that's enabled by having lights on those fields. It's real dark right now. You couldn't imagine. And then just secondarily, if a turf field also means that some of our clubs in town, Pemme Baker Soccer is extremely active. Lots of kids participate in that from young ages all the way up. I know there's a lot of hesitancy on letting Pemme Baker play on our grass fields because it puts a lot more wear and tear on them. But if a turf field suddenly meant Pemme Baker could play in Plymouth and on our fields, that would even further help to develop those programs, develop those kids. I think it would be great. So my kids will be well gone from the high school before they get any benefit from that, but as a community member, I'm definitely in support of us finding a way to do that. I know $3 million is a lot of money. Start to spread that out over a lot of years. Get an $18 million budget, you know, $3 million sounds like a lot of money to someone who is middle-class living in our community, but we spread that out. Lots of different communities, many years to pay for it, fundraising, it becomes much more achievable. So, my support.
Thanks, Seth. Anyone else from the, from the? Privilege of the floor want to speak? Don't be happy with privilege of the floor. Okay, great. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Appreciate sharing that with us. Board member concerns. Yes, Barbara?
Just sitting here, listening to the conversations, my mind is going towards what I heard sometime this week on the news about the university system declining enrollments. So I'm thinking about our enrollments here, because years ago, we did do a forward-thinking assessment, anticipation of what our enrollments would look like, and they were declining. I don't know exactly offhand where those years ended, but could we have an update? Can we look at that again and see what the last trends were and where we feel they are now?
So we have enrollments over the past years that I give you at every budget cycle. And then we do have some possible future opportunities for tuition students as well, and then we have some tuition agreements, so they're a little skewed. But I can bring the, what our history has been.
Yeah.
But overall, we have remained pretty steady, given the sharp decline in most districts. So people are knocking on our door all the time, I'll tell you that much.
Are we looking at anything in the very near future about a decline?
It's an aging state, so there's, across the state, it's a decline.
Great, okay. Anybody else have anything?
I have, I'm, I'm past my time, but has, are you folks aware of what's going on in Bridgewater and Robby Ebron?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know, I'm a taxpayer in Bridgewater, too, so I, I just. Are you, are we accepting those kiddos if that passes next September? How is that all going to happen?
So I can, I can, can I respond?
Yes.
She brought up, so I was.
Right, right. So, so we have been in some preliminary talks, but there's, we have not spoken with anybody who has the authority to make those decisions. And they're putting the cart before the horse a little bit as far as that piece, but I think the board is open to discussions about, about that piece.
We have room.
Yes.
So, and we are interested in making money.
There you go.
To help pay for things we're talking about tonight. So we're very motivated.
So if, the board will take more of an active role if we, once, once March hits and they're still interested.
Yeah.
That's something that can be considered.
I think more on March.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that is everything. A motion to go into non-public, someone would like to state why we're doing that. I cannot.
For personnel negotiations.
Barbara, okay, and I'll do roll call. Bruce, are you going to handle signing off on all these students? Do you need help?
Yes, I took care of it.
Okay, all right. Paul, can I do roll call? Go back to Sam. Greg, Paul, Phil, Barbara, you made the motion, and Peter Pettigill, who seconded that?
No one.
No one seconded that. Let's go back.